All right, we're going to have the final group of the evening tonight, and it is V I S D trustee, super district seven. The candidates are Mike Mercer, David Steves, and Henry Wood. And they will do a one-minute opening, then we'll do questions, we hope to get through about six questions, maybe seven, and then we'll do a one-minute closing. We do numbers, and Mr. Mercer, you'll first to start.
Thank you, thank you very much, Randy, I appreciate that. I am, let me get this a little closer, I am Mike Mercer, and I want to tell you a little bit about myself in this opening statement. I grew up about twenty-five miles just northeast of here in a small town called Edna, Texas. Most of you probably passed through it a number of times. It was a small community, but it was a wonderful community, and it was a great school system. From there, I graduated, and I went on to Baylor University, where I had the opportunity to be involved in a number of different organizations, a number of different activities. Some of the most impressionable ones were student government, and then also an opportunity to do mission work in inner-city Waco, specifically working with children in some of the low-income housing areas. It taught me a lot. It taught me from a very young age that there is nothing more precious than seeing the light turn on in a child's eye when something clicks. At that time, I was also probably my, the best thing that I found while I was at Baylor is my wife Brooke. We've been married for twenty-five years, we've lived in this community for that entire time, and over the last twenty years, we've both been active volunteers, both in the community and the school, and my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer. Mr. Steves, one minute.
My wife, talk into me. My wife and I have been married for seventeen years with three kids in the V I S D system. My school year, we'll have a fourth grader at Mission Valley, a sixth grader at Cade, and a freshman at West. My father was a teacher for over thirty years in Yarke Town, so I grew up in a home with the educator. After graduating from Texas State Technical College for diesel mechanics, I started working on a Victoria foreign equipment. I worked there for almost two years before going to work for Union Carbide as operator. Currently, I work at the plant and the lab for brassing.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Wood, one minute.
One minute, that's a challenge, okay. My name is Henry Wood, I've been introduced. My wife Karen and I have been married for thirty-four years, we have two children. Our son is employed by the Texas Forest Service, graduated from Sorrow State University. Our daughter is a senior at Kingsville, Texas A&amp;M. I have spent twenty-three years working as a 4-H and FFA volunteer, working directly with youth, also had the great opportunity to work as a mentor with V I S D with some of the elementary students. Retired from a career of thirty-four years, working for South Texas Electric Cooperative, served as chief system operator, interfaced with agencies such as the Legislature and the Public Utilities Commission in Austin, represented electric cooperatives from across the state on a technical advisory committee, and also served as a board office. So diverse resume, I hope, and enough that I can bring some experience in leadership to V I S D.
Just making sure that mic is on. Mr. Mercer, you'll have the first question, and that question is, what have you done to prepare to serve as a trustee, and what is the role of a trustee?
What have I done to prepare? As I mentioned a while ago, my wife and I have both been active in V I S D as volunteers for over twenty years, either through different service organizations or directly through the schools. We have raised all three of our children in the V I S D school system. Our oldest daughter, Campbell, who's here with us tonight, is a junior at Baylor University, graduated from West High School. I have a son who's walking the stage this year from West High School, and then we have our bundle of joy, our Scarlett, who is a fourth grader here at V I S D. Have been extremely actively involved, both as a watchdog, PTO, and in a number of different organizations, have volunteered to help teachers, have volunteered to help with mission work here in town, specifically focusing on youth and children, also very active in our church with our youth and our children. I spend a lot of time around youth and children, and it's taught me a lot about them. As far as the role of the board, you know, the role of the board, really, there's four main functions. One of them is to adopt a budget that's presented to you by the superintendent. Another one is to evaluate, hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent. The third one is to adopt the tax rate, which obviously is an extremely important one, and the fourth one, here we go, and the fourth one is, okay, I've got it here, I've got it all down. Those are three of the functions, the fourth one being, well, it'll come to me in my next answer, I'm sorry, excuse me. But the other thing is, is that while I was at Baylor University, I also got my degree in public administration and management, and the emphasis of public administration is running public entities, tax-based or semi-tax-based entities. My experience at work over the years at Mercer Construction, an infrastructure contractor, has given me the opportunity to work with a number of government and semi-government organizations, working with their budgets to make, to make things work when it looks like things are slow. Again, my time is up.
In fact, I'll say, if you've never set up here and done this, it's a bit nerve-wracking, and you forget stuff. I remember this, Governor Perry, when he was in the debate, forgot which department he wanted to close, and now he runs that department. So it's an amazing thing. Mr. Steves? Oh, let me give you the question, I apologize. What have you done to prepare to serve as a trustee, and what is the role of a trustee?
I feel that the years living with the educator, my dad, has shown me a lot of what the teachers go through. After he retired from teaching, he came, or he ran for school board and served nine years on the school board here in Yarke Town. So he has prepared me for that in ways that I've learned stories of what to expect from, from the school board, and what to expect having to do on the school board. And we, as a school board, will be setting goals for the superintendent to meet, or see, hopefully. We will be approving the budget that he gives to us, we will be, we'll be setting the tax rate, and it's, just hopefully, I'll be able to look at all of those issues as a parent and a son of a teacher to help guide me through the processes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Wood, the question is, what have you done to prepare to serve as a trustee, and what is the role of a trustee?
I think the role of trustee, and maybe the fourth thing that you were looking for earlier, Mike, is, is the evaluate, evaluate outcomes. So the policies are set, the budgets are set, but they're all from information and policies that are developed by the superintendent and his staff. As they bring them forward to the board, it's oversight. It's not micro-management, but it's oversight management. To prepare myself, I think, and the role of a father, being active, working as a volunteer in the school, and helping my kids to understand they should expect more from themselves, getting to work as a mentor, being on the school district, campus, working with faculty, working as a 4-H volunteer. It wasn't an opportunity to go out here and raise livestock projects, it's been an opportunity to raise blue-ribbon kids, because we interface with them with a kid focus first. Years in the boardroom, working fifteen years as chief system operator, having to come up with budgets, compliance, training policies, and programs, also interfacing in Austin, and understanding how boards work. That type of experience has helped prepare me for the, for the steps that are out and available to make V I S D grow, to put things into a positive.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Steves, you'll get the first chance to answer the next question, do you want to come on up? The question is, if you had been elected to the board prior to the vote to close the three elementary schools, would you have supported the mergers, why or why not?
I would have, I wanted to see more time before I would have decided, more information. And looking from, from the outside, I understand the school board and the other folks had more information than I didn't see, but where I sat, I wanted to see more time before they made those decisions. In the end, I think the right decision was made according to the way the funds are with the school right now, but I fear that someday we may have to revisit the same issue, either opening new schools or closing more schools.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Wood, the question is, if you had been elected to the board prior to the vote to close the three elementary schools, would you have supported the mergers, why or why not?
Being at the school board meeting at the night that that decision was made, and even the meeting before that, and understanding the concern from the community that was a result of information with the task force. I saw the school board members asked repeatedly for as much information as possible for the cast to vote. Based on the information provided to them, I would have voted in favor. Hard decision, but we have to get ourselves back on track financially. There was information shared that night and other information that's available to the public concerning what has happened with the reserves and cost-cutting measures had to be taken. There's also infrastructure problems at some of those campuses. Moving forward is what I want to be more about. Where do we go from here? How do we find a positive on something that has a negative feel about merging? We're about providing more opportunities, better opportunities. Are there going to be inconveniences? Yes, there are. Are there going to be unintended consequences? Yes, I'm afraid there is. I would have loved to have seen an impact analysis, but it was presented to the board that a decision had to be made that night because of budget constraints, and also because of where they were in the planning for the upcoming year, for what they have to provide to the students, whether that's transportation routes, whether it's something like the technology for each one of the campuses, and what they have to have available to the students where they will provide that. Again, I have concern, and I didn't go in that night thinking that that was the best move, but you have to support the superintendent. You hired him to come in and do a job, and I think he did the job.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Mercer, if you had been elected to the board prior to the vote to close the three elementary schools, would you have supported the mergers, why or why not?
What ifs, wow. You know, I've been asked this question a number of times, leading up to the vote and then during the vote, and my initial response has always been, it stinks. Closing community schools absolutely stinks, and I can say without a doubt that there was not a single person sitting at that table at that board meeting that wants to close schools. I think they made that extremely, extremely evident in their time. There were calls for more time, and I understand that. There's things that, that are in that report that, you know, I haven't been privy to. I do want to commend the task forces for the job that they did. Based on the information they were given, I think they drew the most plausible conclusion at that time. If I had to vote that night, I think I would have voted no. And the reason I would have voted no is specifically for what, what both of my, my other guys up here are saying, it was the time factor. And, and, you know, and I, I don't want to point somebody out, but I thought Mr. Mascar did a phenomenal job in that meeting, talking about kicking the can down the road, and how we had to take a stand, and I respect that, absolutely. But based on the information I had, sitting in that room at that time, my suggestion would have been, okay, just tap the brakes. I don't think that this overall is a bad decision, I think that it affects a lot of people. You know, over the last several weeks, I've had an opportunity to visit most of our elementary campuses. I've got to see what goes on at those campuses, and there is not a single campus in this district that does not love those kids. I also want to echo what Mr. Wood said a while ago about moving forward. Now that that decision's been made, and if the feasibility study comes in, I am a hundred percent behind the move, and I will do everything I can to facilitate each and every single one of these students as they make those changes. But like I said, at the time, I just don't feel like I had enough information, other than the fact that we were in a dire situation and a decision had to be made right away.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer. Mr. Wood, the next question is, budgets drive priorities. What do you see as the priorities for V I S D for the 2019-2020 school year, and what are your top priorities for the next two or three years?
Questions don't get any easier, do they?
No, they don't.
I have student focus. There's a lot of information. In fact, we just, all three left to training, and that's why we were last on the agenda. And part of what they told us is, we don't have all the answers. Whoever gets elected is going to have a lot more information provided to them. What's always been a focus to me is not teaching a test, but teaching a student. What's been a focus to me is as much community involvement as possible. We've got a task force out there, and I think they've identified some things that could improve our efficiencies. I hope those same task force will get to work, helping us identify what will improve our effectiveness. I think that's what that's about. So as we set a budget priority, the superintendent is going to bring to the school board what he sees should be in that budget. What I would see is goals, or opportunities to develop the goals and growth plan long-term, so that we don't get into the situation that we were recently in.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Mercer, and the question is, budgets drive priorities. What do you see as the priorities for the, for V I S D for the 2019-2020 school year, and what are your top priorities for the next two to three years?
Well, you know, you've been here tonight for a while, and you've listened to the mayoral candidates and the city council candidates, and I heard one of the city council candidates mention a partnership with the schools. One of my number-one priorities for this next year is to build that community relationship between the school district and the city and the county around us. A lot of times, I feel like maybe the school district gets set aside, taken for granted, not realizing the incredible role that it plays in our community. I think as a board member, I've got a responsibility to be out there in the community on a constant basis, reminding people that what you see here today in our school district is what you're going to see in your community within a generation, and it's important. So that's, I realize that that doesn't necessarily address your budget question, and we'll get to that, but that is, that is a prime concern for me. Secondly, I think from a budget standpoint, we really need to focus on what we're doing with vocational education. We really need to make sure that we mine it for every cent that we can get, that we turn over every stone for every single grant, for every single program, for every single partnership that are available at this time. We know that not everyone's going to go to college. Texas, Texas and Texas A&amp;M are running between fifty-five and sixty thousand students. They only accept six to eight percent, the top six to eight percent of every school. It's not going to happen, so, and that is no knock on anyone. I think that the vocational trades aren't incredible. I come from a family that grew out of the vocational trades. I worked at a business that was built on vocational trades. I have incredible respect for that, but budget-wise, I think that definitely needs to be a priority coming up right away.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. And the question is, budgets drive priorities. What do you see as the priorities for V I S D for the 2019-2020 school year, and what are your top priorities for the next two or three years?
Educate our kids, give them the best education we can. That's the top priority, that's why we're all here, everybody, you and the teachers, the superintendent, school board. From there, we need to fix our issues of having to continually have our budget, our finances go down. We need to get them up, figure out how we can do that, work with the superintendent to make everything better. But top priority, looking out two to three years, we have to get a better entrances and exits to East, West, Cade. There, it's bad. The security for our kids, we need to increase that to make things safer for them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mercer, this question, you'll start with the answer, and it is, some contend that the public trust of the school board is low. Do you agree with that assessment, and if so, what transparent efforts would you help lead to rebuild the public trust in the board?
I think that if the public trust is low, it's simply because they don't, or they don't see what's going on. If you spend, if you go to one school board meeting a year, just one, you'll understand that these people are really doing their best to guide this, this school district. There's nobody up there for the glory. The pay's not that good, I hear, but, but nobody's doing it for the glory. And I think the issue is, is again, how we communicate. It was mentioned earlier in, in the city council candidates about the fact that not everybody gets the news the same way. Not everybody gets the paper, not everybody has cable TV or, or a TV in their home, not everybody has readily available access to the internet. So how do we communicate? How does the school board, and, and, don't get me wrong, I think they're doing a phenomenal job in this, in this effort for transparency. I think the radical transparency that Dr. Shepherd has advocated and the board has instituted has been phenomenal, but it sometimes misses communities. What I've learned again over the last couple of months is there's an organization in this town that meets every single night, scattered throughout this entire town, really throughout this entire county. I think that we need to have a presence at most of those meetings, at least once every two or three months, to let them know that we are, one, that we're partners with them, that what they think and what they feel and what they want is important to us. And two, it gives us an opportunity to tell them, oh, you know what, you want that? Guess what? We're working on that. That's in the process, that's in, you know, that's in the, in the kitty, that's, that's ready to roll. But I think a key of it is, is really, the trust only comes through actively seeking to communicate with our community around us.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Steves, and the question is, some contend that the public trust of the school board is low. Do you agree with that assessment, and if so, what transparent efforts would you help lead to rebuild the public trust in the board?
It is low, from what I, what I've seen, but I think it is a fact that they don't know what's happening at the school board meetings, what, what's going on, especially after this recent vote. And that's part of the reason why I'm running, is because I've seen that it's low. Up until I started attending the meetings, my, my support of them was low. After coming to several of the meetings and watching a lot of them from pre, on the website, previous meetings, there's a lot of stuff I didn't know, and I intend to help get that word out of what's happening. Even if I'm not elected, I'm still going to attend what meetings I can and help get the word out that they are doing the best they can, and I want to continue with helping get the best out of us and them that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Wood, the question is, some contend the public trust of the school board is low. Do you agree with that assessment, and if so, what transparent efforts would you help lead to rebuild the public trust in the board?
Well, I think that depends on the crowd that you're talking to. The crowd that's here tonight probably has a pretty high opinion of what the school board is going to act in. At least I would hope so, because it means you're informed that they have been working forward for a future. They have been working, trying to keep a focus on, on the students. They have been involved in CTE programs. It is a budget priority already, that's one of the reasons I didn't name it, is because I'm involved in the CTE advisory committee. I think the board's involvement in the community, and I'm not saying you're not involved, Ross, because I see you all over the board, but I think that is key and that is important. But there has to be buy-in from the community, and I think with the task force that are in place, that's the first step, giving them ownership, getting them committed, getting them to be a part of the process. I'm looking for opportunities to get out here with the communities I've been in, whether it's 4-H, FFA, whether it's my Sunday School class, whatever it may be, to get out and expand their knowledge of the future of our community. That has to come from the school. So I'm not sure, that'd be as transparent as possible. You set up on a leadership advisory board, and we talk about opportunities in our community that a lot of us don't know exist from agency to agency. You're here with the Chamber of Commerce, we've got V I S D there, we've got the University of Houston there, so there are forums out there, but we've got a diverse population, and as someone else said, all kinds of media that we try and reach to. Not everybody picks up the advocate anymore. I'm sorry, yeah, but, but we get it online. But it is, how do we reach out? I don't know, but you try. You don't give up trying.
And this is my shameless plug, right? Fifty-four cents a day, is that, that's right?
Fifty-four cents a day, home delivery.
There you go. Fifty-four cents a day, and home delivery. Chris Cobbler says, all right.
Plus free online.
Five, articles free online, okay.
It's all included if you subscribe.
All right, Mr. Steves, you are going to be next, and the question is, many say it's only a matter of when, not if, the school district needs to pass a bond issue to replace and repair aging schools and other buildings. What is your position on this need? If you support a bond, how will you work to promote this with the public?
I do support bond to fix the aging schools. Right now, I have two kids at Mission Valley, and that's one of the oldest schools in V I S D, and we need to fix that. It's, there's roofs that leak. After the hurricane, we had trees falling down. Luckily, none of them hit the school, otherwise, it could have been bad. And with supporting that, the bond will have better security at Mission Valley along So I will support the bond for that. If we have issues or wants or other things, I'd love to see a two-part bond where we can prove part A, or part B, or none, and I'd like to see that. Where if they do want to add a new stadium or repair the stadium, that we can put that on part B, then we can choose between fixing, or fixing or building new schools, fixing or building new schools and a stadium, or nothing. And I'd support all of that. I know there's things we need to fix everywhere, not just at Mission Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Question is, many say it's only a matter of when, not if, the school district needs to pass a bond issue to replace or repair aging schools and other buildings. What is your position on this need, and if you support a bond, how will you work to promote this with the public?
I think before we can go forward on a bond issue, we have to first get back where we need to be as far as on our financial. Where at, I believe-
We're at, I believe, a B rating right now, um, and headed for a D rating because of the impact of Hurricane Harvey on our reserves. Now, I'm not sure what the school district looks at and what the criteria will be, but I think that might be challenging to go out and ask for a bond issue under those circumstances. So I think that has to be the first priority, but we do have to look long-term. And we do have a high O and M cost that was identified, and that was something that was stressed to board members whenever they made the decision for the mergers. I would support a bond by all means, but I think the thing, the only thing worse than no investment is a bad investment. So I think first we have to get stepped down with the new superintendent's plans with what his goals are and evaluate what his plan, I mean, he laid it out for them, he really did, and said, guys, here's where you've got to go, got some girls. But it, it's kind of one of those deals of, um, academics can only happen if we've got a good learning environment. And that requires an investment, not only of money, but of time from the community. And so I think, yes, when you get out there, you have to believe in it, and you have to get others to believe in it. You have to have influence and inspire. You have to give people a dream back. You really do. And that takes positive influence by example, by leadership in the community, by all the things that Mr. Mercer was talking about being involved in. It is a commitment of time. That's why I'm choosing to run now. That's what I have available. My kids have done their deal. If I go to an event now, it's not because I'm preoccupied with them. It's because I have a focus, and that's making this community available for the future, to be a better place.
Mr. Mercer, the question is, "Many say it's only a matter of when, not if, the school district needs to pass a bond issue to replace or repair aging schools and other buildings. What is your position on this need, and if you support a bond, how will you work to promote this with the public?"
Well, first, let me start out by saying that bonds, bonds bring taxes. We know that. That changes the tax rate. That being said, a bond is not the end-all, be-all evil of all things. A bond is a very necessary tool made available to school districts and public entities in order to expand and improve the infrastructure. At V I S D, we are in need of expansion and improvement in our infrastructure. So yes, I mean, going forward, I would support a bond, but echoing what Mr. Wood said a while ago, it has to fit what our plan is. I can't, you know, I, I'm going to steal from him because he said succinctly, he said, you know, the only thing worse than no investment is a bad investment, and he's exactly right. It has to fit where we want V I S D to be, not tomorrow, not five years down the road, but ten, fifteen, and twenty years down the road. So yeah, I would support something that, that, that worked along those lines. As far as how, how to, to bring the public on board and build support for that. Well, number one, I think, I think what, what happened at the last meeting, the council said this is a tough, or the, the board said this is an incredibly tough decision we have to make about merging these schools. But the message that they sent was that we take our fiscal responsibility very seriously. And I think that's the start. That's the message that has to go out first moving forward, is that the board did this because they're taking their financial, their fiscal responsibility extremely seriously, that they are going to do everything they can to provide that same level of education to every, every student at V I S D, and at the same time, get a handle on what we're expending on a daily basis in our M and O. But I think that that's going to be a key point that we have to communicate, that those steps have been taken, and that moving forward, what we're going to do with the bond is going to fit that picture that benefits every child at V I S D.
Mr. Wood? This question is, "What are your expectations for the superintendent for the 2019-2020 school year?"
Okay, you're going to emphasize he's taller than I am. Vertically challenged, that's right. I think my expectation is for him to work as hard as he has since he hit the ground. There's a special, uh, meeting that's called Thursday, because we've got a busy week. And part of that will be the review of contracts, including the superintendent's contract. The first thing I thought of was like, wow, this kind of quickly just came off of this and now they're going to review his contract. But you understand, there's an expectation on his part. How committed are we as a community in supporting him in the job that has to be done? He stepped up and pushed forward through a task force, through the community, helped them make the hard decision that had been put off for a period of time. So my expectation is for him to continue to give the board the opportunity to make the right decisions, to build our school district, to make us financially sound so that we can build future opportunities. I look for him to be the example to faculty that each child matters, and at V I S D, we have the expectations of learning, that we're going to give you opportunities, whether it's through fine arts, whether it's through CTE, he's on campus. I encourage you, go out there and look, he's there. That's the expectation. Keep doing the great job that you're doing now. And I'm not smart enough to know everything that the board knows right now, so I'll wait until I get on there, and I'll tell you if my expectations change.
Mr. Mercer? The question is, "What are your expectations for the superintendent for the 2019-2020 school year?"
Well, I used to think that I was a pretty high-energy guy, and then I met Dr. Shepherd, and he is very much a high-energy guy. He hit the ground running immediately and started with his Listen and Learn tour, where he walked around and he wanted to find out from our community, what exactly did we want? What did we want for our school district? And then he immediately moved from that into forming the task forces. My expectation for Dr. Shepherd is to keep on keeping on. One of the cornerstones of a successful school district is continuity. You know, my dad was a, a high school state qualifying hurdler in high school. And I remember going through junior high when I thought I was, that it's hereditary, and it's not. I will go ahead and tell you that now. Thought that it was hereditary, and I was going to try it, and, and, you know, and, and my, my problem was I kept seeing that obstacle in front of me. I kept seeing that hurdle in front of me. And as I got closer, that's all I could see was that hurdle, and I would hit it, and I would skin my knee, and ask the Lord for forgiveness for what came out of my mouth next, and, and, and my dad sat me down one day, he said, "Son, it's not always about the obstacle. It's about the rhythm in between the obstacles." And he said, "If you keep that rhythm between the obstacles, pretty soon those obstacles are just another opportunity." That's what I expect from Dr. Shepherd, to keep on keeping on, stay with this constant rhythm that he has developed, and turn every single obstacle into an opportunity rather than a crash.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer. Mr. Steves, the question is, "What are your expectations for the superintendent for the 2019-2020 school year?"
I expect him to give the kids the best education they can get with, through V I S D, continue doing that. I would like to see better community involvement, not just continue saying everything's on the website, but get out to the communities that don't have the website to look at. They don't have the computers. Go to those, those neighborhoods and get their involvement in what's happening next for V I S D. That's what I expect Dr. Shepherd to do.
Mr. Mercer, this will be the last question of the evening, I know. And the question is, "What do you plan to do differently when the school board members of the past have done if you were elected as trustee?"
Wow, especially with members, current members sitting in here, wow. Well, like I said, I am kind of a high-energy guy, and I believe in communication. I believe in putting ourselves out there. I believe in being visible in the community around us. And it's not that they don't do that. They do. But I plan on rascinating it up a little bit more. Again, over the last several weeks, over the last, I guess, two months, the number of meetings that I've had the opportunity to attend boggles the mind. I thought I was a busy guy. I thought I was involved in a lot of things, but what I'm involved in is a small fraction of what goes on in this community. So one of the things that I would do, and I, and I think, I do think that effort is out there now, but I think that I would strive to make as many of those, those, uh, community meetings as I possibly can. That, people need to know that they're heard, you know, that's, that's the big deal. When we go back to that meeting, this last meeting, and we talk about the public comment section, number one, I applaud the board for extending the time and allowing everyone who had something to say to say that night. I know it caused the meeting to run a little late, but I applaud you for that because people need to be heard. We don't all have to agree, but we have to understand that people need to be heard. So that is definitely one of the things that I would try to ratchet up over this next year, is being available and being there and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer. Mr. Steves? The question is, "What do you plan to do differently than the school board members of the past have done if you are elected as trustee?"
I think more community involvement, get out to the, some more of the neighborhoods, get on the feet, or get on the ground, and, uh, talk to the people, see what they're saying, and just continue ensuring that V I S D is giving our kids the best education they can.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Wood, the question is, "What do you plan to do differently than school board members of the past have done if you are elected as trustee?"
Now, you didn't go get the training, we just got this, and we weren't supposed to point fingers at the previous or present board members.
I point all my fingers at Chris Koppler.
There you go. So that said, I, I'm not going to be critical. I don't know, as, as they told us in that meeting, what was going through each one of those board members' heads when they were making those decisions. I know what matters to me is that opportunity to make a difference in the community, and that's a driver. That's a very inspirational driver to the right people, and I think you have to be that example. Can I be it better than the others? I don't know. I'm going to be as committed as I can be to hit some of the places maybe that haven't been hit before. And I don't know where those are, but I think you have to reach out to every community. Uh, Mr. Mercer talked about the impact, um, to these communities where the schools are being closed and being merged. In my previous career, we had impact analysis provided. When you were going to make a big decision, uh, there was information provided for you beforehand. What FTEs, what full-time employees are going to be affected? What the budget impact would be, both positive and negative, how much that would affect your resources. I know the, the opportunities to communicate are very limited under the Texas Open Meeting Act. They're very restricted, and, and as Mr. Mercer said, it was great. They expanded the time for the public to talk. But when the board itself was talking, you understand, under that Open Meeting Act, that's the only time they can communicate with one another, is in front of everyone. So I want to make that very effective. Someone else has done it, hey, maybe there's a reason they're not doing it, but I'm going to ask.
Why don't you stay right there, and we're going to do one-minute closings, and you get to start.
And I get to start, so now I'm supposed to remember everything I didn't tell you before. As a 4H volunteer, um, that opportunity to make a difference. Someone talked about seeing the light come on. I don't think I ever saw a light come on any greater than whenever I was on the school campus, serving as a mentor. And you realize that child doesn't have those opportunities at home that you provided for your own children. I talked with someone in faculty earlier and asked him, I said, "How many students do you touch a day?" He said, "You mean how many should I or how many would I?" And they've got about a hundred and twenty students at a secondary level for this particular person. That's a lot to touch. I think if we can, let's give them that opportunity to work with the students hands-on, and I think we've got some ideas that I've approached with the CTE committee and even talked to the superintendent about. Innovation to me doesn't always mean new technology. Innovation means stop, rethink. Can you do this better with the same resources?
Thank you. Mr. Steves? You have one minute to close.
Teachers, education, and school safety are very important to me. I know the financial problem that V I S D is in didn't happen overnight and will not be fixed overnight, but I look forward to helping solve it. Thank you for this opportunity tonight. I would appreciate your vote, and if elected, I promise to approach all issues as a parent, teacher, son, and a conservative taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Steves.
Finally, Mr. Mercer. So there's no time limit, right? First of all, I'm going to start out by thanking you, Mr. Vivian, the advocate, and the chamber who sponsored this. I'm going to thank each and every single you, one of you that stayed here tonight through the end of this. Your participation, when I look out there and I see your faces, that you care enough to stay to listen to us, it inspires me. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Wood and Mr. Steves both for being a part of this election. I think it's phenomenal when we have multiple people run. I would have loved to have the two candidates that were unopposed actually come in and even answered some of these questions as well. I think it's good for the community. I think it's great for the community. Folks, we have a gem here. It's easy to forget, but V I S D is a good system. Sometimes we look at report cards, sometimes we look at funding, and we lose the, what the purpose of V I S D is. Walk these campuses, make a call, visit a, visit a principal, walk the campus, just get a look at what's going on. We have one of the most dedicated and capable staffs, I think, in the entire state of Texas. And that is something that we should reward and we should lift up on a regular basis. Again, I want to thank all of you for being here. Most of all, I want to thank my wonderful wife, Brooke. Brooke, she's been with me every step of the way through this. But most of all, I want you to remember, I'm asking for your support tonight, but if you elect me, I'm not going to stop asking for your support for V I S D.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer. And that's it for this evening, and, uh, I, I counted, there are fifty-four people still here. So I want to thank you guys for sticking it out. I know that's, uh, it's tough. We go dog always. But I want to thank the advocate, I want to thank, uh, the Golden Crescent African-American Chamber of Commerce, of course, the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, the University of Houston Victoria for allowing us to use this, um, facility. Thank you guys for being here. Go out and vote. May 2nd is the vote. May 4th, I'm sorry. May 2nd was my father's birthday, that's where that went. May, May 4th is, uh, the day of vote. Early voting starts the 22nd of April and goes through the 30th. Thank you, thank you for being here tonight.